Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 21st meeting 2020. Or as I like to say, the sequel of last meeting, just about. So it is the regular session. Can we start with roll call, please?
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Costalano?
Here.
Councilmember Mezner?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Here.
Councilmember Allison?
Here.
Councilmember Bergel?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, do we have a report out from the closed session?
Mayor, no final actions to report from closed session.
Thank you very much. So we are going to start this evening with a presentation I'm quite excited about. I know all of us on the council are pretty excited to hear about. I know Sierra from Community Services is here. Is Robin here too? Robin? Would you like to come up and tell us about the Eureka Youth Council?
Hi, Council. Thank you so much for having us. And thank you so much. Last week, some of you joined us in Room 207 to personally introduce yourself to the Youth Council and kind of give them insight on what it's like to be a City Council member. And thank you so much for that. That was awesome. So we had 14 people apply for Youth Council, and they were all amazing and outstanding candidates. And these are the four that were selected. And they are so bright and amazing, and I can't speak highly enough about them. I already love them so much. They're awesome, and you're going to come to find that out as well. So they are going to introduce themselves and tell you why they wanted to be a part of Youth Council.
Hi, my name is Gwendolyn Parsons. I am a Eureka resident, and I joined the Youth Council because I wanted to help stand for the unheard voices of the youth in Eureka.
Hi, my name is Christina Smith. I am also a Eureka resident, and I applied for Youth Council so I could create a bridge in the gap between my peers and the legislative branch of the city.
Hello, I'm Stella from Eureka, and I joined Youth Council because advocacy is my passion. I have good insight, and I feel like I'm a good voice for people my age.
Hi, I'm Tristan, and I'm also from Eureka. And I join Youth Council because I believe our city works a lot better when the youth is engaged in local politics.
Thanks, guys. Is there any questions that anyone had? Yes.
Well, just, I've been filled in a little more about the Youth Council, but could you remind folks that are watching or folks here tonight just a little bit about the program and how it works and how the Youth Council will be engaged in decision-making?
Yes, so their term runs from the beginning of January through the end of May. And so far this month, we kind of had a meet and greet and got to know each other. And moving forward, we're teaching them just how a City Council meeting works and how things like that operate. And starting next month, we'll be looking at a particular agenda item. So we'll look at the agenda, and I'll pull something from the agenda. We'll look at it, and they will make a recommendation based on how they feel about being... Let's see how to word this. They're going to make a recommendation based on what they hear from their peers and being youth and make a recommendation based on their level of expertise. And we're going to research it and try to do the best we can to provide some extra insight from a youth level. Anything else? Thank you, guys.
Thanks so much. We're looking forward to seeing what you guys come up with this year. Next?
Yes, you may. I'm the worst. I always have to say one more thing. I didn't get to meet you at your meet and greet. So if there's another opportunity to do that, I'd love to. But I also encourage each of you to reach out to me. I know we all are receptive to being reached out to individually, but if you'd like, I'd be happy to meet with you individually too, just to get to know you a little better.
All right. So next on our agenda, we have a proclamation. And this proclamation is for Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And Councilmember Mezner is going to read that.
All right. Well, first of all, I just want to say that this is such an important issue, and particularly in our area, in Humboldt County, there are a lot of issues with this area that people are very unaware of, I think. But the education around it's really important for people to understand what is happening in our city and not just in our city, but in Humboldt County. This is prevalent across the United States. And people see television programs and think that that is... People are taken, for instance. But to understand really what happens is critical. And so I'm just really grateful for those who are advocating for human trafficking awareness and being really diligent in speaking not only to the community members, but all ages as well. So I know that our high school, Eureka High, and St. Bernard's both have education in the high schools. So that's something that's really important. And it's personally very important to me. So in recognition of human trafficking awareness, January 2020, whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the inalienable right of freedom and added the 13th Amendment to the Constitution, making slavery illegal. And whereas slavery within the United States today is often found in the form of human trafficking, most often, actually, which weakens our social fabric, increases violence and organized crime, and debases our humanity. And whereas victims of human trafficking are typically forced to work in various forms of labor, exploitation including, but not limited to, commercial sex acts, drug processing, and distribution and other services induced through force, fraud, or coercion. And whereas due to its isolating nature, many individuals locally and across the globe are unaware that trafficking exists in Humboldt County and in their neighborhoods. And whereas it is estimated that more than 20 million men, women, and children around the world are victims of human trafficking. And whereas Seroptimus International of Humboldt Bay and Seroptimus International of Eureka are working to abolish human trafficking through education, advocacy, and collaboration. Now therefore, I, Heidi Mezner, along with the Mayor and Eureka City Council do hereby call upon the citizens of Eureka to recognize the vital role they can play in ending all forms of slavery and to support Seroptimus International of Humboldt Bay and Seroptimus International of Eureka as they raise awareness through education and other efforts to stop human trafficking. Thank you.
And I'd like to invite those of you from Seroptimus to come up and accept this. I know you have somebody to speak, but you all wanted to come up. Do you want to? Yeah, we can all get a photo.
And also Katrina Sims. You want to go ahead and come on up as well? Just to... for all your work you do.
Absolutely. Well, good evening. Thank you, members of the council. Thank you so much, Heidi, for that presentation to us, members of staff, and members of the audience. My name is Laura Mittlemas. I serve as President of Seroptimus International Humboldt Bay. And I have the additional pleasure tonight and honor to represent our sister club, Seroptimus International of Eureka, and members who are here with us as well. And of course, Katrina. Absolutely. Human trafficking occurs all around the world and in every one of our 50 states. And I think I have some maybe even more updated numbers that I pulled up. 20 million? It's estimated there are 40 million global victims. Hundreds of thousands of them are right here in the United States. The United Nations estimates that 71% of global victims are women and girls. It cuts across all age, socioeconomic, gender classes. It includes all ethnicities. It preys on the young. It preys on the vulnerable. Indeed, you could say human trafficking knows no bounds when it comes to the commoditization of human beings. Seroptimus International's mission is to support women and girls through education and human and economic empowerment. Here locally, we are involved in supporting age-appropriate education from kindergarten to K-12, to teach our children not only to keep safe, but to really understand what the face of human trafficking looks like. We are members of the Safe House Consortium led by Katrina Sims, whose goal is to bring stakeholders together that represent clergy, represents social services, service groups, law enforcement, with a common goal of supporting women and victims who want a path out of human trafficking. We must not forget those that are currently in the web of human trafficking. We like to think of ourselves as modern-day abolitionists, and we wear that title proudly. It isn't only prevention, it's awareness. We must all work together to learn to really see it, to have an open and compassionate heart and mind. And we must take action. Thank you for your continued support of our work as we journey forward to work on this really important issue in our community, in our country, and globally. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want a picture? Natalie wants to ask a question as well.
Are there any local events that are trainings for the community that are coming up soon? I'd love to be able to share those, and I'd like to go myself, actually.
Sure.
Do you want to speak to that, Katrina? And then maybe?
So actually, I recently became CSEC certified, which stands for Commercial Sexual Exploitation of Children. I am now certified to do CSEC 101 training. However, I feel qualified enough to do CSEC 102, which is a step up. I am going to be actually talking as I am the Awareness Coordinator for EPI. And I'm going to be actively in conversation with Heidi to see when we can have a huge training on that and how we can get that going and go forward. Thank you.
Great, nice. Do you guys want a picture?
Come on.
And I just have a couple of items for my mayor's announcement. One is tomorrow night, right here in the council chambers at 5:30, we're going to be having an informational town hall meeting called Light Up Eureka. And it's going to be an opportunity to talk to staff about lighting, how we choose where our lighting goes, how to get lighting repaired. Our CEA is going to be there talking about the kind of lighting you can do at your own house. And our Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Team, SEP TED, through Eureka Police Department will be there to talk about how to use lighting to have a safer home in business environment. So we hope you all can make it. It's going to be interesting. It's a little more fun than a presentation at a council meeting because you can interact with the staff and ask them questions. So that's tomorrow here at 5:30, and we hope to see you there. The other thing that I wanted to mention is I got to go to the investiture for Dr. Jackson at Humboldt State University this last week, which was a really great honor. I'm really impressed with Dr. Jackson reaching out to Eureka as much as he has. We've had more interactions with HSU than I think we've possibly had in a very long time. It's really refreshing to see that he recognizes Eureka as a resource, as a great place for his students and staff to live. And I'm enjoying working with him. And the final thing is I have been asked by the mayor of San Jose to serve on a steering committee to draft governance for a customer-owned utility... A customer-owned utility project, buying PG&E and turning it into customer-owned. So that is an interesting project that I am working on, and we'll keep you informed with that as it progresses. So now we will move on to the public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Each speaker is allotted three minutes. Do we have any speakers?
Our first speaker to sign up is Anne White, and she will be followed by James Graham.
I am an under-representative taxpayer, a stick in the mud. Last meeting, you called your taxpaying constituents "sticks in the mud." I know at least a few of you councilmembers consider yourselves to be environmentalists. With less than 90% of our wetlands left, you played zoning shell game, excuse me. You played fast and loose to get around the Coastal Commission and fooled constituents, the sticks in the mud.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor, my name is James Graham. I'm here to talk about needle litter, as usual. I created a new group called Don't Get Poked in Humboldt. It's just really about awareness of where the needles are and where people are finding them. It's a new year, and it's only about a week old. But John Shelter sure finding a lot of them. 163 out of a creek. And they find them in Burger King and here and there. So I'd like people to check that out, and I'd like people to take pictures of where they're finding them. And I'd like people to report where they're finding them. That would be cool. And there's just, like I say, a lot of needles still laying around the county. I don't hear nothing about shutting Hatcher down or anything like that. I guess, I don't know if you're just going to let it continue or what's going to go on with it. But, I mean, a syringe exchange program is made to prevent diseases. It's made so people don't share needles. But what's happening in this county is people are actually breaking into containers to get needles that are used to reuse. People are preloading the needles full of the drug. They're hiding them in restaurants, casinos. Their customers go in the bathroom. It's ready to go after they pay for it. It's out of control. Something's got to be done about it. It's not protecting people from diseases when people are throwing them all over the county by the thousands. It's just not. Something's got to be done about it. And it's the same thing every time up here. So I will hope you would think about that. I mean, there's needles all over our county, and it's your county, too. People are going to get poked more and more. And something can be done about it, you know? Like maybe having somebody run a syringe exchange that knows what they're doing and ain't on drugs might be a good step forward. Thank you.
Our last speaker that's signed up is Cornelius Lowenstein.
Good to see our new city manager. Very well-welcome to the city. Good evening, dear citizens, city, council, mayor. Have you happened to see a recent YouTube video with a tweaked-out-of-her-mind lady using a street sign on Broadway in broad daylight as her personal stripper pole? If not, I can tell you it has 80,000 views and counting and is not even a week online. Another YouTube video popped up of a young man in his RV traveling through. He witnessed and/or became a victim of no less than three crimes in just as many hours in this once quaint and sleepy seaport town. We have a systemic image problem and it's killing of the golden goose. As the county sees, so does the county. You see it with Seattle and King County and Clear Lake and Lake County. We had articles on crime, needle litter, and about a practice called boofing, all based on the doings of Kim Bergel's favorite political pet that has turned rabid on her, aka Hatcher, the failed social experiment suffocating old in downtown with its fallout. Being called a stick in the mud, or even worse, being singled out and called a hate monger by a sitting council member, being scoffed at, has not exactly built a trusting and collaborative relationship between many engaged, concerned, and caring citizens and the current council. Benito Mussolini defined fascism as the major of government with private interests. Einstein said that repeating the same experiment with the same setup, expecting different results, would be the definition of insanity. To rebuild that trust, it would be a good start and clear signal to shut Hatcher down. The abusive structure and negative impact on the lives and well-being of those that do not engage in self-destructive practices on a daily basis needs to stop. Hatcher has given... was given many chances, got many passes, and frankly, has been created and supported by the city. Shut it down, pull the plug, let DHHS and the Open Door Clinic handle needle exchange on a 1-for-1 or non-basis. The impact of needle litter and biohazard is a topic of articles across the country, even across the world. I just read one from England. Does Eureka deserve to be an all-absorbing black hole? Or can we become a beacon on how to turn a community around? Job description for all public employees is to make Eureka safe again.
Do we have any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, I will close public comment. And we will move on to the consent calendar, and then we're going to go to D. Or are we going to do... okay. So right now, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Does anybody have anything they want to pull from the consent calendar? All right. Do I have a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
I... I forgot that we don't do that here. Been a little while.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right. And at this point, I would like to make a change to the agenda and move Report Action Item D1 up and invite... to come up and tell us about the Klamath Dam removal project.
Bringing me here tonight on a night when you are contemplating a letter of support for our project. My name is Matt Cox. I'm the Director of Communications for the Klamath River Renewal Corporation, an organization about which I'll elaborate more in just a second. I also dropped off for each of you some supplemental materials. They're not necessary for this that I'm about to do. They're just a little bit of background that I had with me, so I thought you might enjoy them. So review them at your leisure. KRRC, and that's the first thing I needed to learn. Klamath River Renewal Corporation is a mouthful, so we're all acronyms all the time. But KRC, we were launched in 2016, and we're nonprofit. And we are governed by a 14-member board appointed by the states of Oregon, California, and some other groups. And this is the time when I would like to recognize Councilmember Arroyo, who was a recent appointee from the state of California to the KRC board. So appreciate you coming on board, councilmember. KRC is a single-issue entity. We are tasked with overseeing the removal of four dams on the Klamath River and nothing else. So we often get asked why we aren't reviewing ideas A through Z. That's just not our charter, okay? We are commissioned simply to do this one thing, as one very complicated thing. If you could skip to the next slide, please. Oh, thank you. Is this my clicker?
Which one?
Okay. Some of this presentation also will be centered a little bit more on communities that have different concerns than Eureka. So I'll gloss over some of those. But I think of particular importance here is that the health of the river is at stake with the removal of these dams. And it's not a cure-all to remove the dams, but the science and the review from the state of California indicates that dam removal is a major and critical step for improving river health in a community that has such a proud legacy of the fishing, as Eureka does, certainly, I think, will benefit from increased fish stocks. And it holds the promise of a jolt of economic benefit to the community. And so there are a lot of different reasons to do the project. But certainly for a community such as Eureka, I think that the economic impact of the increased commercial and recreational fishing industry is of supreme importance. And so I'm happy to be able to present that to you and think that that's a definite outcome of the project. So this is not a new idea. So the dams were built in two stages. Two of them went in in the 20s, and two of them went in in the 60s. Hydrofacilities have to be relicensed every 50 years. And when they are relicensed, they have to meet all of the modern standards that a brand-new dam would have to meet. These dams don't. In fact, they lack some basic necessities that current dams would have, such as fish ladders, for example. And so Pacific Corp. has been operating on a series of one-year licenses since then, but it's not a sustainable solution. There had been some agreements in the past, particularly the KBRA, and that required congressional action to move forward. But Congress didn't act. And so out of the ashes of the KBRA rose the organization that birthed KRC, and that's the amended Klamath Hydro Settlement Agreement, so even longer. And KRC is tasked with implementing that, as I said, primarily the dam removal portion. The KHSA does include liability protections for Pacific Corp., which is the entity who owns the dams currently. And it provides a ratepayer cap. Pacific Corp. is charging ratepayers a monthly fee, some in California, primarily in Oregon. And those ratepayers will pay no more than $200 million, most of which has already been collected. This is a broadly supported agreement. And so as you can see, there resides the states of Oregon and California. We have federal support. We have environmental NGO support. We have fishing group support. We have commercial fishing support. And so I like to include this slide because... And we have tribal support. And I want to single that out because without the tribes and their longstanding efforts to remove these dams, no agreement would have been possible. So Yorac and Karuk are both signatories to this agreement and certainly have been a driving force behind it for many decades. So we're happy to have their support. But again, broad signatories equals broad support. And I think it's another example of the many benefits that the project can ultimately provide. I mentioned Pacific Corp.'s customer funds that are almost all collected. In fact, Oregon has collected. California is trailing just a bit. In 2014, California passed a water bond, and that bond includes up to $250 million of state funding to complete this project. If we don't meet that, we're going to get the money back to the state. I'll skip over this slide mostly. The overarching thing to understand is just that KRC is going to remove the dams and restore volational fish passage. Over the course of that project, we'll need to be making improvements, I'd say, to roads and ingress and egress points. And we've committed to leave all infrastructure in as good or better condition as it's going to be at the beginning of the project. And so you'll see the top bullet, for example. A required mitigation of the project is to give the city of Eureka a new water pipe. They have one pipe that feeds all their water. It's submerged under one of the reservoirs. So when that reservoir disappears, we're required to replace it. And so we're giving them an upgraded water system. We'll be footing the entire bill. It's $4 million, so it's a nice benefit to the city. At some point, they would have had to replace that pipe anyhow. So it's good for them. And we want to be good neighbors as well. That's both a mandate that we follow from FERC, but also it's just a decent... but also it's just decent, and we hope to fulfill the highest aspirations of the agreement in every way. Project timeline. So we inherited a project timeline from one of the earlier agreements that really wasn't feasible. As any of you who have dealt with bureaucracies understand, these things can stretch out. We feel very confident right now that the project will start, the actual physical demolition of the dams, the drawdown, will start in January of 2022. We have a world-class team assembled to help us with that. Kiwit Infrastructure West is our primary contractor, and they have fantastic experience in complex water projects, and we feel that this is right in their wheelhouse. And I'll go back a little bit and just say, besides removing the dams, there is a restoration component to the river too, so the dams will come out. But for example, you'll have reservoirs that disappear, and there will be denuded land that was formerly submerged. And so we'll be revegetating all that land, and we're currently in the process of growing different fauna in test plots, for example, to see what is best for the different mix of soils that will be exposed. So we want to make it, you know, revegetated quickly, but also naturally with plants that are currently in the natural environment and that will be hardy and sustain themselves. So that's an ongoing process, but that's just an example of what we'll be doing after the dams come out. There they are. Look at them now, because we hope that they will be out in a couple of years. So I flew over the dams this summer. They're small. While we're on this slide, I'll just let you know too, the dams were built to spin hydroelectric turbines. They're not water storage. No municipality gets water from them. Ag does not draw water from them, which is a myth that I wish I could put to rest, but regardless of how hard I try, that rumor seems to be out there. But all ag water is diverted from above our project. And so no farmer or rancher is going to lose a drop of water from this, and that's an important thing to understand too. I think that there are potential ag benefits insofar as if the river water quality improves and the need for these flushing flows diminishes, perhaps ag could have more water available to them from Upper Klamath Lake in Kino. So that would be a hope for the project ultimately. This is the biggie. So like I said, there are many, many benefits to the project, environmental and water quality benefits, and bringing the salmon back. Those are very important, you know, important to the tribes for economic and cultural reasons, but definitely important to the economy as well. Now, in the short term, this construction or deconstruction project is expected to create more than 400 direct jobs. However, it's expected to support more than 1,000 indirect jobs too, with increased economic activity. So you can imagine food trucks, dry cleaners, laundromats, restaurants, gas stations, the gamut. There are local hiring preferences as well, and so we're hoping that this is a benefit that stays in the communities as well. And I'll reiterate again, and I think of particular importance for these coastal communities, already a big business here, we think that with an increased run of salmon, and I should say that the Klamath was once the third most prolific salmon run on the west coast. The other two were in Alaska. And so the potential was there, obviously, for this to be a highly productive river. And other dam removals, and one of those sheets I left for you elaborates on this a little bit. They've shown that, you know, the fish by nature, they will go back and explore habitat that is open to them. And so the dams are about 200 miles from the ocean, but they also cut off access to many tributaries, so more than 400 stream miles of historic habitat are going to be open to the fish. And so if history repeats itself, we think that they will be spawning and living in these areas quickly. I'm just going to focus on the bottom line here. The PUCs of both states have indicated that the KHSA, under which we operate, is a better deal for rate payers than not having the KHSA. And so that's the deal in totals, dam removal plus the protections that they receive. I've already touched on this. I am, I took history of science in college, which let me avoid any real science, so I'm not going to act like I can give a detailed presentation on increased dissolved oxygen and its benefits on fisheries. But the benefits are there. And again, all of this comes from the consultants and scientists who we have working with us on this project, and also many of them come from the state of California scientists who have completed a detailed draft environmental impact report on the project as well. I've seen some of the effects of this and the way that it kills fish, sort of rots them from the inside, this sea shasta. We think that, again, having a free-flowing Klamath that reintroduces some of the natural temperature and flow regimens that have disappeared since the dams were built, it will eliminate some of the conditions that allow these to flourish. And as a result, will help the fish. I'll skip over the ag. I mentioned that before. It's not as germane to this community, but we think it has potential benefits for ag as well. And that's an ag representative in support of the project. And we do have ag support as well, though no ag signatories. Another common myth, the reservoirs don't provide meaningful flood protection. It's microscopic. There will be a slightly different change in the flood profile to the river. And I'm talking in a period of about a dozen miles below Iron Gate Dam, which is the fourth dam, the one closest to us here. KRRC is working on some mitigation or liability measures that could help homeowners who are possibly affected. And again, we're talking 12 to 18 inches in a hundred-year flood event, so almost nothing. This is important. So this is a lot of what KRRC does. This is a landmark project. It's the largest dam removal and river restoration project in the country. We think it deserves to have intensive regulatory and environmental review, and it's certainly getting that. And so we have a lot of steps that we have to go through, and there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of science. There is a lot of proof that we need to provide ultimately to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC, as I'll call them. But a lot of steps and a lot of people contribute to what we submit to FERC. And so we're currently in the process of getting the licenses that we need. Here are a couple of the main steps. So that definite plan was almost 3,000 pages of background about the project. I mentioned before that the state has written an extensive environmental review of the project as required by FERC. And then that review undergoes a public comment period, and it's submitted, recirculated if need be, and the state has decided to recirculate a very narrow part of the DEIR, which is currently happening. So out of this giant report, I was pleased that only a little bit of it is going back out for public comment. So we feel that we're on the right track there. And there's more to go. I will say, and not in this presentation, that we'll be making another major submission to FERC on the 28th of February, which will include updated cost estimates for the project. All the estimates that we've had so far show that we are within our funding, which is very important for an entity such as KRRC, because that $450 million I mentioned to you is the funding that we have. And so I feel that we're making great progress. I appreciate Eureka contemplating a letter of support for the project, which I think will do nothing but good for this community, and I'm hopeful to gain your support. So with that, I will entertain any questions that you might have about the project.
So you may have, Councilman Castellano?
Thank you for your presentation. What do you, what are the biggest obstacles currently in place to this project moving forward?
So you know, the, we have two licenses pending before FERC. We need them both. One is for transfer and one is for surrender. FERC is being asked to contemplate a new paradigm for transfer. So typically, if something like this were to happen, it would be going to another utility, let's say, which is an ongoing concern with deep pockets and consistent revenues. So KRRC is an entity that has that limited amount of funding, but that has put together, in my opinion, really a fantastic proposal for FERC that includes insurance, performance bonds through a contractor, indemnification packages and liability transfer for Pacific Corp. And that's ongoing, the development of some of this, not surprisingly, because it's new and because the project is complicated. It is also complicated. And, but I have great faith in our team and the negotiations are going well. And so I think that what we ultimately submit to FERC will satisfy their needs for, they don't want a stranded asset. That's really what it comes down to. And so we need to prove to them that we have the financial wherewithal to complete the project. I do not believe that the project itself holds any great complications for Kiwit and the other entities who are subbed under Kiwit. I don't think it presents technical challenges, so it's really just proving to FERC that we have the financial wherewithal to do it.
Councilmember, Member Bester, then Arroyo.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for clearing up some of the questions, particularly around ag and just some of the reasons behind doing this. What, what was the reasons for putting the dam in in the first place, the dams?
Yeah.
That were there? Because often, you know, that's, that's a question that is going to come around and probably, I'm sure, has already.
Definitely.
What was the reason for it? And was it just unforeseen results and circumstances?
Yeah, so, so the dams, all four of the dams just spin hydroelectric turbines. That's their sole purpose. And they continue to do that. And so as far as unforeseen circumstances, the dams are working as intended for their primary purpose. But as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, these dams need to be relicensed every 50 years. And when they are, regardless of whether it's this project or another project, they need to meet all of the current mandates. And so they need to meet any Endangered Species Act mandates, for example, fish passage, things, water quality, all of that. And so in this particular case, it is anticipated that relicensing and taking the steps that would be necessary to relicense is actually a worse deal for consumers, electricity consumers. And I don't speak for Pacific Corp., but Pacific Corp. has agreed to this as well with, you know, again, the three-legged stool that I talked about, their liability protection. So I think that for them as a business, it is a better deal. And for consumers, it is a better deal than undertaking the relicensing, which, that $400 million figure that was up on one of the slides that I glossed over a little bit, that was an anticipated cost for relicensing and what they would have to do, and that's a decade old. And so I won't speculate, but most stuff has gotten more expensive over the course of that. And then also, over the course of the license, the licensee is required to meet any additional mandates that may come to pass, changes to species covered under the ESA, for example. And so that is an open-ended cost that they have, which a decade ago was estimated to be 400 million. And we have a fixed cost, which is estimated to be less than that for Pacific Corp. rate payers. And so it's a long-winded answer. I hope I got to what you wanted, but I'll just say the dams were hydro. They still spin turbines, but there are changes that have made it economical for Pacific Corp. to remove them.
And did the lack of water over the years, has that, the diminishing of rainfall and all of that played into it?
Not that I'm aware of. So the Bureau of Recreation will continue to have two dams that they operate above our project, and that releases about 5% of the water into the river. The other 95% is rainfall runoff and tributaries. And so really, it's small in that regard. And so some years, there will be more or less rain. But these dams are kept full really all the time so that they can create the head necessary to spin the turbines, so.
Is this going to help muddy fish?
What's that?
Is this going to help muddy fish? You know, that?
Muddy fish?
Well, you know, the, the issue with the salmon that there's.
Yeah, I think I know what you're talking about.
Fishermen have been concerned about.
I think so. I mean, we talked to, I talked to fishermen last year in Crescent City, and I think that this is the same issue that you're talking about. And so, you know, the river itself is a, is a denuded barren river. So the dams have also starved it of the sand and gravel necessary for healthy salmon spawning habitat, right? And so actually, removing the dams, in the short term, it's going to release sediment down the river. And I didn't get into this, but that's why we need to draw the dams down at a certain time of the year, at the most beneficial time, most biologically dormant time. But I, if I understand what you're asking, it will help the muddy salmon and all other salmon too.
Good.
So we're hopeful for that.
Thank you.
Could you share with us why it's helpful to have these letters of support at this point in time?
Yeah, definitely. And so besides the body of background, both, you know, scientific, financial, insurance, liability that we need to present to FERC, we want to show FERC that the project has broad-based support, and I, I think that we have done that at different times, particularly July 29th. We had a big submission to FERC, and we have a large list of supporters, many of our signatories and other groups and some cities. I believe Arcata at the time did that as well, submitted a letter. We want to show that the community supports the project. And I mean, community writ large, right? Like, we want to have all of the city governments. We would love to have the counties, and we're working with the counties affected by this too. It is, it is a second part of showing FERC that we have what it takes to do the project, and that is the support of the community.
Councilmember Allison.
Just speaking energy, so the dams are created for hydroelectric purposes. Do you know the estimated nameplate capacity of?
It's about 200 megawatts, and it operates at about 70 megawatts. And so Pacific Corp., you know, they're a large utility. They're required to provide energy across their load-balancing authority. They have a long-term plan in place. I don't want to say to replace this power, but just regardless of what they bring on and offline, they need to show to the PUCs of both states that they have enough power to meet the needs of the area that they're responsible for. And then, of course, they have to meet the needs here in California of our renewable portfolio standards. And so, again, that is in the aggregate. So they will provide the power and it will meet the clean energy mandates of the states of California and Oregon.
And as far as I'm aware, the state of California doesn't recognize hydro projects as renewable energy?
Kind of. They recognize hydro over a certain size as not in the RPS. I guess that's a double negative. Small hydro, yes. Large hydro, no. And I don't remember what that cutoff is, and I'm ashamed because I worked in the legislature for many years, and I should know that.
Right. And just for those at home, if you're thinking power, the Humboldt Bay peaker plant's like 120, 130 megawatt-hour capacity, so 70 megawatts running for, for all these dams isn't really that much.
Yeah, this is about, it's less than 2% of Pacific Corp.'s total energy portfolio, from my understanding. Again, I don't speak for Pacific Corp., but I seem to recall that. But, but whether it was a large part or a small part, you know, the determinations have been made that it's better to remove this. And as I said, they're responsible to provide power that meets the clean energy mandates regardless of what they bring on or offline.
All right.
Is that it?
We don't have any other questions. I'll ask if there's anybody in the audience who wants to speak on this. All right, we have an audience member.
My name is Greg Tucker. I've worked for the Karuk tribe on the Klamath Dam removal issue since about 2003, and I just want to say that I do think it's really important for communities like Eureka to express to FERC that you endorse this project. The Karuk tribe, the UROC tribe, and a lot of folks here in Humboldt County have worked really hard for the last 15 years to get to where we are right now. I'd also mention that commercial fishermen of Humboldt County, often represented by the Pacific Coast Federation of Fishermen's Associations, which is the industry trade group for small boat commercial salmon fishermen, are a signatory to this agreement. Dave Bits, who lives here in Humboldt County, is the president of the board of that organization. They've been great partners to work with. And we see this as not only key to revitalizing the Karuk tribe's culture, subsistence resource fishing, provide economic opportunities for tribal members who would be, could get involved in commercial salmon fishing or guided salmon fishing trips. It's a big deal for salmon fishermen here on the coast. Oftentimes, there are closures of the Klamath management zone that reach all over the north coast and into Oregon because of poor returns of salmon to the Klamath. So this is part of putting that back together, and we think is going to benefit Humboldt County's economy a great deal. And I think this is a good lesson to learn because maybe the next time I'll be coming looking for a letter to endorse removal of dams on the Ill River, which I think will also contribute to rebuilding our fish-based economy here in Humboldt County. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
I'm not going to abscond with this. Thank you very much, almost. Thank you so much for letting me present. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Oh.
Do you have a comment? Oh, it's just a comment. Okay, so we're commenting now. Councilmember Allison.
Um, I think this is a fantastic thing for the community and that, you know, our, you know, in the wake of climate change and so many cards stacked against many species in our area, doing something like this would, would really, I think, make a positive difference for a change rather than be regressive for species. And I, I think it's long overdue. I, I hope this gets completed sometime soon, but like you so eloquently put, there's so many moving parts to this, and. And I'd just like to make the motion to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for the removal of the four lowermost dams on the Klamath River.
One second. Discussion.
I just have a comment that I do serve on the board of the KRRC, recently appointed. And I checked in with our city attorney just to make sure that it was A-OK for me to vote on this. And his advice was that, since I am not compensated in any way, shape, or form, that it's perfectly fine for me to go ahead and be part of this vote, be part of this decision. So I just wanted to note that I sought legal counsel on that, and that is the opinion of our city attorney. And so I'm free to vote on this, in case any of you are wondering, my peers.
I just want to make a quick comment. I just want to let you know how much I appreciate all the dedication and the work that's gone into this. This has been a long time coming. We've been talking about it for years and years and years and years. Feels like forever. I mean, it probably hasn't been forever, but it certainly feels that way, I'm sure, that way to you guys. So I am so on board with this. I'm really grateful that you're all here and that this is finally going to move forward and that we get to be a part of that. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? All right, then, all in favor.
Unanimous, yes. The motion carries.
All right, we'll get working on your letter right away. Thank you. And now we will move on to item C1, which is the Q qualified combining zone district text. And I'd like to invite Senior Planner Getz up.
So good evening, mayor and council. At your last meeting, council introduced an ordinance to add the Q qualifying combining zone district to the coastal portion of the Eureka municipal code. And just as a reminder, Q zones are intended to be site-specific. They are combined with the base zoning for the parcel. They can restrict the uses that are allowed on the parcel, and they can also place additional limitations on those uses. So following conversations with the local coastal commission staff, we did propose to make a couple of changes, and I've highlighted those here for you. It's basically just clarifying the language and clarifying that the limitations can be allowed on those uses. And one more change there in the purposes section. So staff does recommend that you waive reading read-by-title only and adopt the ordinance, as well as adopting a resolution to transmit the ordinance to the coastal commission for certification. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Do we have any questions? All right, I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody in the public who wanted to comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back for comments or a motion. Councilmember Messner.
I would like to move the city council waive reading, read, ready by title only and adopt bill number 975CS approving the text and local coastal program amendment to add a Q qualified combining zone district to Title 10, Chapter 5 of the Eureka municipal, I can't say it, municipal code, and adopt a resolution transmitting the amendment to the California Coastal Commission. And I'd like to say that, yes, I think this is really important and was trying to help the, was in that meeting with the coastal commission. And we worked on getting it quickly, wanting to move this forward quickly, and made it very clear to them that this, along with one of the other ones on our agenda tonight, that we would move those very quickly forward and pushed them to even come up with some kind of timeline that we could actually see this come to fruition for us, so.
All right, I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All right, all in favor.
Unanimous, yes. The motion carries.
Excellent. At this point, Senior Planner Getz, would you like to invite up Lisa Savage as well to do our next presentation?
Good evening, mayor and council. Bringing back the text amendment and local coastal program amendment for the coastal service, coastal, sorry, coastal service commercial zone district. So just to recap from the last time we were here, we are here to increase the building height in the coastal service zone district from 35 feet to 55 feet. And the reason behind that was to provide consistency with the inland commercial service, service commercial district. There's the map again, and the staff recommendation, and the suggested motion.
All right, do we have any questions on this one? Seeing none, I will open it up to the audience. Is there anybody here on this item that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for a motion or comments. Councilmember Allison.
I'll make the motion that the city council waive reading, read by title only, and adopt bill number 975-CS approving the text and local coastal program amendment to increase the building height limit from 35 feet to 55 feet within the coastal service commercial zone district and adopt a resolution transmitting the amendment to the California Coastal Commission for certification.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor.
Unanimous, yes. The motion carries.
Right on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Now we're going to invite up Swanna Asbury to join Senior Planner Getz as we discuss the third item, which is the Crowley Site Local Coastal Program Amendment.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, I am bringing you the adoption of the Crowley Site LCP amendment. So just to reorient you, we're talking about the South Crowley Site, the lower blue box sandwiched between the Humboldt Bay Fire Training Grounds and the wastewater treatment plant. And I'm bringing before you the adoption of bill 972, which includes changing the zoning of coastal-dependent industrial to service commercial, also changing the land use from public quasi-public to general service commercial, and adding a Q overlay zone. So here's a map showing the current zoning of coastal-dependent industrial. And here's a map showing the proposed zoning with service commercial and the Q overlay. And when we brought this to you at the introduction, we mentioned that the coastal commission had some minor changes to the language, to the limitations. So that's pretty much all I'm going to be showing you tonight. Those changes are in red. So life, safety, and natural hazard limitations on the permitted uses include, but are not limited to, the following. All structures will comply with the flood hazard area regulations contained in the Eureka municipal code. Structures will be constructed to allow relocation or removal if necessary. Prior to commencement of any use, including future uses, the owner-manager of each use will develop a tsunami evacuation plan and implement and enforce the tsunami evacuation plan for the life of the use. The tsunami evacuation plan must be approved by the city of Eureka, and a copy of the approved tsunami evacuation plan and any new or updated evacuation plans must be provided to any and all tenants and employees on the site of the use and to the development services department. And the uses listed herein are the only uses that are allowed on the site and only when the uses comply with the limitations for the site and any conditions of approval resulting from required coastal development permits. So what are our next steps after tonight? We will submit the LCP to the California Coastal Commission. We're anticipating a turnaround time of three to nine months. It's dependent on the coastal commission. Hopefully, it'll go quick. Then we will process a coastal development permit. Usually, that's a three-month turnaround time. That will go to the planning commission for approval. If it's appealed, it will come back to city council. And then lastly, they can pursue their building permits. So I have a suggested motion for you and happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have questions on this item? Councilmember Arroyo.
This probably came up at the last meeting, and I apologize for missing that discussion. But I was curious to know if our, in the case of the, I know that this is about, I know that this is not about a specific project, but for the use of the trailers on the site, does our emergency shelter declaration circumvent some of these requirements? Or are these the steps we need to follow regardless of that?
It's regardless.
Oh, it is? Okay. And their staff have weighed, I assume coastal commission staff have weighed in on that? Great. So there is no, I think that emergency declaration wasn't the all-encompassing option that we thought it was, perhaps? So is there any, is there any more expeditious method? I know staff has probably researched this ad nauseam.
Because of the nature of the type of use that the Betty Kwan Chin Foundation is proposing on the site or will be proposing on the site in the future, we believe this is the most expeditious manner to get it there. The emergency shelter declaration allows emergency shelters. This is kind of more a transitional sort of housing as opposed to emergency shelter.
Okay.
It's the after-the-emergency-shelter step.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Brielle.
So on that, on that note, it seems to me that we've discussed ad nauseam the housing crisis. So though it is transitional to a degree, it makes sense that we are needing to get people housed, like, as soon as possible. And that seemed to be one of the reasons that we had discussed the emergency shelter, or excuse me, the land use, the, I can't think of what the name of it is right now. What was it?
The Shelter Crisis Declaration?
Yes, the Shelter Crisis Declaration. Sorry, I'm off tonight. So I'm just curious, is there, is there a way that we can, is there a workaround? Because it seems like it is a crisis. I mean, we talk about it in our country constantly, consistently, that it's a crisis, that it's an emergency. We've got people out, it's cold, it's raining. Is there, is there any way to look at that differently?
Just a different set of eyes.
I think as far as emergency shelter, the emergency shelter declaration goes, then that is, that is in the situation where somebody is on the streets, needing to get out of the weather, needs to have a place to go. I think that, again, the project that we believe is going to be proposed for this site that we're laying the foundation for, isn't that emergency, get them off the street today kind of situation? It's, it's, it would be the next step after perhaps being in an emergency shelter kind of thing, where they're building a rental history and receiving services to find rental housing on their own and move into job placement and that kind of thing.
So I understand that, but I'm just, I'm just curious because that would open up beds at our emergency container village.
Correct. It should, yes.
Right. So there's just no way, no workaround. It just seems like this has been going on and on and on forever, and it would be great. And I know that you're frustrated with it as well. I mean, I'm not saying, but it just seems that there should be something that we can do to make this happen quicker.
I'm not aware of anything else. I think this is the fastest path forward that we have available to us.
But the three, what'd you say, three to nine months? So that could be, that could be a change, right? It could be shorter, it could be longer.
It could be three months. We would hope that it would be three months. As Councilmember Messner indicated, we have spoken with them, the Q qualifying text amendment and also this amendment, the coastal commission has been, appears to be supportive of moving this long as quickly as possible.
Oh, that's wonderful to know. And then, secondly, with this, the tsunami plan, so is wastewater treatment facility, they have a tsunami plan?
I don't know if they do or not.
And I'm curious, is that something that the Betty Kwan Chin Center can work on prior to any of this moving forward? So if they get a lot of their steps done, that could move it forward more quickly as well?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All right, seeing none, I will put it out to the audience. Is anybody here to talk about this particular item? Seeing none, I will bring it back for comments or a motion. Councilmember Messner.
I'll make the motion. I think we're all in agreement here, but I'll make the motion to that the city council waive reading, read by title only, and adopt bill number 972CS, an ordinance of the city council amending the land use plan map. Is that, is this the right one? And the implement, is this correct, right? And the implementation plan map of the local coastal program to cause parcel 019-271-004 to be zoned service commercial CS and have a land use designation of general service commercial and to add a qualified combining district designation. The Q designation will specify the principally allowed uses and limitations on uses for the site. And I would like to say again that we really pushed them in that meeting, and they are very supportive of it and looked at their timeline, looked at the coastal commission meetings and when they could get that in. And they, they let us know that they will let, they will make us aware of when those meetings are so we could also send our report, our support and people there to be at the coastal commission meeting to advocate as well. So we asked them for that so we could really show this is something we really need to have move forward, so, yeah.
Councilmember Messner, before we have a second, could I also ask you to include adoption of the resolution recommended by staff? It may not, it's not up there, but it was in the agenda.
Oh. And that...
Just the staff recommendation for a resolution.
For resolution.
Yes. Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Do we have any discussion on this? Councilmember Arroyo.
So I realize that this motion doesn't necessarily, like I said, pertain to a specific project, but I'd still love to continue exploring whether we can push the bounds of that shelter crisis declaration, potentially, for the site. And I don't think, I mean, my understanding of that was that it allows temporary suspension of some of the existing land use regulations. And I think a solid case could be made for why we have a shelter crisis still and how it fits into the emergency sheltering of people because it would immediately result in very expeditious movement of people into a sheltered space. And then all the other steps, in my view, could still be taken for that project to actually go through the process, kind of parallel tracks. And I would be in favor of pushing on that, given the tenor of what's coming down from the state and given the circumstance that we're in right now as a city, even knowing that we might get in trouble for rushing to shelter people. So it seems like, I realize it's not really the agenda item. So we're voting on this, but I don't, looking at that timeline, that looks like a year. Because we're talking maybe... Because we're talking maybe three to six months for one piece, three months for the next piece, you know, a couple months for actually all the site specific permits. I mean, I, it's just hard to imagine that it would be much faster than 10 months to a year. And this is one instance where I don't mind putting us in the line of fire of, of, you know, a state agency over this, when the governor himself is saying, you're not doing enough about homelessness California cities. We're like, well, here we go. Here's what we got. So I would certainly be in favor of exploring ways to make that happen, even though the coastal commission staff had felt otherwise.
So it sounds like we have a first and we have a second and then we have some additional direction for staff. So let's first vote on the motion and then we can talk about the direction for staff. Right? Councilmember Castellano?
I, I just had comments maybe prior to voting on the motion, but, okay.
Still that time.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, let's see, well, and maybe this is a question that partially relates to other council members' comments. Is it possible to begin some of the preparation for the site that's necessary even before the coastal commission decides on, on this or takes a look at this? It seems like some of the prep would not be antagonistic, you know, to the already permitted use of the site.
I think that if council is amenable, that this might be better brought back at a future council meeting for discussion since it's not on the agenda tonight and it's not part of this action.
Okay. Okay, sure. Great. And then just to say, I know this has been a long process thus far and so I just commend you for all of the work leading up to this. And I know that as a local citizen did write with some questions about funding and there are partners who are ready to help fund this project. So I just want to make sure the citizenry of Eureka and beyond knows that, you know, people are, are ready to, to move forward on this project.
All right, are we?
Sorry, one more comment. The, it is on the topic. The, I just wanted to give voice to some other comments we got from someone who's frequently here but wasn't able to make it tonight, that there were some current concerns about the consistency of information that we've received about this. I think I understand very fully why we're at where we're at right now, but some questions around why the entire project wasn't actually being zoned public quasi-public. And could you just explain a little bit more about that?
Public quasi-public does not allow residential uses, so. C S zone district does.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure to include that. And then this person indicated that by and large they're supportive of one of the potential uses of the site, but, but had some questions just around the zoning being consistent. So, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Unanimous yes. Motion carries.
All right. And then do we want to, on the next agenda item, discuss further options for moving the, the whole idea of making things move faster and having to put it off is tough, but how would you?
I'd like to see that agendized. I realize, yeah, I realize it's a little bit of scope creep for this item, but it's, you know, it's the, we all know that there's a potential project on the site and that we've been trying to figure out a way to move it forward. And I would like to see it agendized because I think it needs a little bit of political push.
And I fully agree with that. So I would definitely second that.
All right, so we'll put that on the next agenda.
That would most likely be on the second meeting in February. We're actually, the next agenda is already in production almost, so if we can, we'll get it on the first meeting, but just to kind of let you know the schedule.
Okay. I think, okay.
I just, I have a, sorry, point of order question maybe. I don't know, maybe it's time to do that. I mean, the, the, the mission that we've been referring to but not saying out loud is listed within the resolution, so, so does that, I mean, I guess that's the question I have is like, it seems like we're trying not to talk about it, but it's actually already in the public record, so I don't know. Great point.
So. Hello, Director Gerbi. That's why you sit in the back, you just wait for moments like this.
I try not to, try not to come up. I just wanted to say that, you know, a lot of us, especially some of the people in this room, aren't necessarily up to speed on all of the, the decisions that led up to the path that we selected, but we were going down that path with both the city attorney and the coastal commission and everybody agreeing that it was the best path forward in the quickest amount of time. Now, there have been extra things that have happened in the intervening years at this point, not months, that have slowed things down with neighborhood concerns and environmental studies and things of that nature. That being said, your staff can analyze whether we're still on the best path forward, but I don't think that any of us are ready to talk tonight about what alternatives there might be or what the potential implications, positive or negative, of either those might be.
Councilmember Messner?
Councilmember Castellano did mention, just ask the question, is there a way to do some of the preliminary aside from the actual site occurring, you know, the actual activity occurring there, but is there a way to prep everything ahead of time? So as soon as that yes is there, the yes is there, like as soon as that takes place?
I think that there are two potential issues with that. The first is that any work of that nature that we would look to undertake on the site would fall into the broad category, the very broad category that is defined as development in the coastal act. And so we would be out on a legal limb in that regard. The other issue is that in the event there is some problem with the coastal development permit, whether it's in its initial issuance or on appeal to the coastal commission, which could take quite some time, then there's a likelihood that all the costs incurred in that early work would be wasted.
Thank you for answering that. I would encourage everyone to, even if we need to, like write letters to the coastal staff or even the commission, what, whatever we can do to kind of keep that forward. Because I was, I definitely said that in the meeting and really pushed it, the council and our staff did as well. And so they, they really looked at their calendar, tried to move it forward, but I think that kind of pressure, like you mentioned, councilmember Royal, as well helps, so.
Councilmember Royal?
Yeah, I would love to see more information as soon as possible about a few options to move forward. And I realize it's not comfortable because it's not charted territory, but my view is that the state gave us this tool of the emergency crisis, shelter crisis declaration that is a little bit ambiguous in what it entails. But it is a tool that was provided to communities in California by state authority. And then, you know, we are also getting a lot of, I think, you know, right now it's a lot of pressure in the form of words and press releases from the governor, but I think you know, we don't know what that will turn into as far as mandates for us to address homelessness more quickly. But certainly the writings on the wall that we need to do some things. So I think the combination of those things would make me comfortable doing something that's outside of the box, even if it isn't exactly what, and, and it sort of depends on the willingness of our partners, of Betty Quan Chin Foundation, being willing to do something different. Perhaps they're willing to, you know, rapidly house folks in those and then over time turn them more into a long-term project. Maybe they're willing to do a few different options, but I'd, I'd like us to, if possible, keep, keep a fire under our butts and ask, and I'm not saying that staff are slacking on this in any way, shape or form, but I, I think it's, it's for us to push forward with the political will to say, you know what, we're gonna, we're gonna do this, even though the coastal commission staff doesn't really like it and see if we can push the envelope on housing another, what we've agreed that this could house, what, like 50 more people, 50 to 60? That's not small when it comes to our own police department having identified, you know, a continual homeless population in the city of around 200 people. To me, that's a very significant change and I don't want to, I don't want to lose out on it.
And I think one thing councilmember Royal said too, that I don't want to lose track of, it's, I don't think anybody's saying to stop doing what you're doing. Like continue to move forward on that and then additionally look for additional ways. I'm going to give it to City Manager Lotter.
You ever have that feeling that you, you asked for something and then might end up regretting it a few minutes later? But I'm going to go out on a limb here and maybe offer some thoughts. It seems as though the council supports this across the board and feels strongly about it. If it'd be pleasing, Madam Mayor, to you and the council, perhaps what we could do as staff is actually craft a letter of strongly worded support that each and every one of you would sign to, and have it addressed to the coastal commission or the coastal commission staff, whomever we thought was the appropriate audience. I did have, I participated in my first staff level meeting last week with the coastal commission and one of, one of the takeaways was that while we talked about this, I thought Planner Gatz did a great job facilitating the meeting. There was obvious frustration around the table because what we were informed of was that there are some other applications, you know, that aren't even moving along at the same pace as this particular decision that this community's been wrestling with now for quite some time. And, you know, they might, you know, they know that there's another community that has a cannabis business that might need to come forward for review, but yet our, our app is probably going to be received by them sooner. So there was another staff member who was present that said, geez, cannabis business, housing the homeless, cannabis business, housing the homeless. What, what really should be the priority here? Just to put a finer point on it, I think, for the staff. But I, I think that my experience here in a brief period of time is that the staff is working diligently to, to move this across the, the goal line. And if, if that would also meet your needs to, to also participate in that dialogue directly to the coastal commission, I would advise that we craft a letter and all of you sign it.
First, the city attorney had something to say, so let's see what.
I'm just a little concerned about the process right now. I think that we're talking about things that are really off agenda and given that there is potential controversy around this project or the ultimate use of this land, we might want to kind of bring it to a conclusion now with direction to staff. If it pleases the council to ask the city manager to prepare the letter that he suggested and at the same time do an internal review and report back to you on whether there are other options for trying to speed things up. I'm just a little concerned that further conversation on what's kind of an off agenda point, I mean, it's related obviously to the action item, but that's my recommendation.
I think I'd feel comfortable with that. So we have a motion, we have a second. Do we want to vote on this particular item? We have more discussion specifically on the zoning part of this. Councilmember Castellano?
Sorry. I, I do want to, one, one thing I do support is that I know that staff has been working really hard to build a good working relationship with the coastal commission. And so I do really appreciate the need to move forward with that relationship as well as we will be embarking on many other projects that we'll be working with the coastal commission on.
Councilmember Messner?
I just wanted to make everyone aware that this year there are things coming up, putting, being put forward for bills regarding the, the responsibility coming back to cities for the homeless, not just the responsibility, but the actual legal action against cities if they do not fulfill certain things. So we need to be aware of that. That is, there's things that would have to happen to make that work. And I'm sure cities and counties are not, you know, are going to come up against that, but that's something right now that is a bill that's coming forward. So people need to be aware of that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second and more conversation. Please, is this about the zoning? No, can we stick to the zoning?
We have a motion and a second and a vote. It was passed unanimously.
When did you guys vote?
We all voted.
Yeah.
Well, then I saw that then people started talking again, so I didn't know you actually voted. I thought we were back discussing.
I think what we're looking for is consensus for staff direction on a letter to the coastal commission and/or to bring an item back for discussion.
All right, in that case. Did we get to the consensus on that?
Yes, a letter.
Councilmember Royal?
A letter sounds great, but I would like it to come back as an agenda item. Both, both and, thank you. And you know, the coastal commission staff know that just like they're the staff that work on it and then their commission does rogue things and votes based on some, a lot of other factors. I think that they also, you know, like, I don't think it's bad for us to push the envelope and for our staff to also continue building a relationship. I don't think that that necessarily is, is harmful for us to say, you know what, we want to take bold action on this thing. It might be a little outside of what you normally do. I don't think that that necessarily endangers our relationship on different projects. Just putting that out there.
All right. Do staff have direction that they need?
I'm so sorry, I.
I told them that. All right, moving on to item C four. This is the ordinance in aggressive conduct or, the obstructive and aggressive conduct ordinance, and we will have our city attorney talk about that.
Yes, Mayor and members of the council, the recommend, recommended action is detailed in the staff memo, and that is to adopt on second reading bill number nine six nine. This bill repeals exist, an existing ordinance that criminalizes aggressive and obstructive solicitation. The problem that exists with the existing ordinance is that the solicitation component of it does have free speech implications, at least as the law has developed over the last five years. And any constraint on speech is very difficult to justify and some courts have opined that no city will ever be able to justify an ordinance that addresses the content of a people's speech. So the new ordinance proposes to unlink aggressive and obstructive conduct from any content-related restraint. And I think in that sense, it will prove to be a useful tool for law enforcement because it enable, will enable our police officers to focus on the actual content, keep it separated from, I'm sorry, the actual conduct and keep that separated from the content. So I might, just tossing out a simple example, if someone is engaged in drug dealing, we don't really need to, to know about the content of their speech, which is not protected, but they're engaged in aggressive or obstructive conduct, which we are now providing the police with a tool to, to deal with. So I think there are advantages to this approach. to deal with. So, I think there are advantages to this approach, and besides, it extricates the city from a legal jeopardy that I think exists under the current ordinance. We did make a change to the ordinance that you requested at your last meeting, and I think at this point, it's good to go.
All right. Do we have any questions on this? Councilmember Bregel?
No.
Okay. All right. Seeing none. Is there anybody in the audience here to speak on this issue? All right. Let's bring it back for Councilmember Bregel.
So, I move that we waive reading, read by title only, and adopt Bill Number 969-CS, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Eureka, repealing Section 130.06 of the Eureka Municipal Code regarding solicitation and adding Section 130.11 to prohibit aggressive and obstructive conduct.
Yes, I'll second that, and I would like to just say that thank you for including that change, because I think that was important for this, the council.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second, we have discussion. All right, all in favor?
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Yay. I followed that all the way through. Thank you very much. And now it is time for our reports. We'll start with our city manager report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for an opportunity just to share with you. I think my acclamation experiences to the new position here in Eureka, just thought I would share with you how I've been spending my time, and it's been busy. Couple of different days, wasn't able to really even get to email or phone calls till after five, and I think that's just kind of the nature of the beast when you start a new post. But, you know, I've been getting around to touring the facilities, of course, spending time with directors, getting introduced to staff. I just did that today with the police department, met with the command staff, and then got to go through dispatch and throughout the whole building and just meet people, and I really enjoy doing that and connecting with staff, frontline, mid-level, and upper management. It's important to me to make those connections, and so I'm, I think I'm close to being done. I've gotta do the fire department yet, so I haven't done that tour, but I'll be getting to that very, very soon. As I mentioned before, I did get the, an opportunity to participate in a staff level Coastal Commission meeting, which is going to be an adventure, and just kind of learning about that agency and potentially, hopefully, identifying ways for us to serve the public together. Toured, I believe it's called Aegis, today with the mayor and Councilmember Messner and Chief Watson and the captains. And so, it was interesting kind of learning and hearing about that particular facility and how they intend to try to help and assist with alleviating opioid addiction in our community. And I've spoken to two of three Rotary Clubs, so now that I've said that, I'm assuming I'll have an email message sometime tomorrow from the third inviting me in. So, just wanted to share that I've been trying to get out and meet with as many people as possible, and I know that engagement is important to you as the council that governs here. So, that is my report.
Thank you very much. Congratulations for making it through your first few weeks.
Thank you.
I will start with Councilmember Bregel this time.
All right. Well, so it's January. It's the beginning of a new year, and so I just wanted to bring forth and set intention for our new year by reading our resolution, our human rights resolution that we passed three years ago. It just gives us an opportunity to revisit kind of what we were looking at and how we wanna live in our city. And as you can see, we still need to work on getting along. So, this is Resolution Number Two, or 2017, Resolution of the City Council in Support of Human Rights, Inclusiveness, Environmental Sustainability, Affordable Health Care, and Religious Freedom. Whereas, in light of the current climate in our country and the negativity and hate that is being fostered, and whereas Eureka will not turn our back on the men and women from other countries who bring such richness to our city, we will continue to build bridges, not walls. And whereas we will never back down on women's rights, whether in healthcare, the workplace, or any other threatened area threatened by a man who treats women as obstacles to be demeaned or objects to be assaulted, and just as important, we will ensure our young girls grow up with role models who show them they can be or do anything. And whereas, that there will be no conversion therapy, no withdrawal of rights in Eureka, and to all the LGBTQ people in our city and all over the country who feel scared, bullied, or alone, you matter. You are seen, you are loved. Whereas, that we still believe in this nation's founding principle of religious freedom, we do not ban people for their faith, and the only lists we keep are on invitations to come pray together. And whereas the Eureka Police Department is committed to building trust between police and communities of color so all citizens feel safe in their neighborhoods. And whereas our residents are committed to environmental sustainability and that climate change is real, and that clean power, zero waste, and other measures to protect future generations are a priority. And whereas affordable universal healthcare should be a continuing priority for the state of California, the United States, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka, that, oh wait, sorry. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka condemns all hate crimes and hate speech. We will fight discrimination and recklessness in all its forms. We place the highest value on human rights. Further resolved, that this resolution be forwarded to Senators Feinstein, Harris, and Representative Huffman to demonstrate our city's commitment to fairness and inclusion. And this was something that was really important three years ago, and I think it's really important in our community to continue to address the way we treat each other in our world, because clearly, a lot of work needs to be done, and it happens individually. It doesn't happen in a bubble. You know, we all need to work together on this, and it can be just the smallest little thing. And I just wanted to let you know that the Human Rights Commission actually has hashtag Humboldt Kindness, and so they are actually promoting kindness in our area as well. And I think that that's a huge piece of building community. You know, a community that works together and a community that supports people out of poverty and out of those crises and ways that they're living, that's a community that thrives. A community that continues to belittle and put people down and video people on the street because they think that somehow it makes them feel better about themselves to put other people down, that is not a healthy community. So, I hope that in this next year that we can continue to build on being kind to one another, one thing at a time. And then I do have just one more little thing, which isn't that little. So, I missed the council meeting last week because I was driving home from Oakland Children's Hospital with my daughter, who was in a terrible accident on December twenty-eighth. And the reason I bring this up is I wanted to just thank, you know, I work with Humboldt Bay Fire pretty regularly, but you don't work with them. I mean, you work with them and you realize the great stuff that they do, and I've gone out on ride-alongs and I've done a lot of things, and I just, I adore them. I think they do a fabulous job. But I just wanted to especially thank Chris Kaden, Brandon Johnson, and Yola Montalban for saving my daughter's life. What a gift to have these people in our community working vigilantly to continue, to continue to bring people to safety and all those things. And I just am so, so forever grateful that we have this kind of people in our community, and those are the role models. Those are the people we look to, not the people that tend to need to put people down to make themselves feel important, but the people that are out there that care, that go the extra mile. And I just, it's very important, I just really felt compelled to talk about that because it's, it certainly has changed my life in a, in a very huge and different way. So, that's all.
Thanks for saying what you said, Kim. I agree with you. I don't really have anything to say tonight, but I just wanna say thanks for, you know, echoing the past and bringing that forward again. I really think tolerance and love and respect for one another should be practiced three sixty-five, twenty-four-seven.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Oh, great words. Well, I wanted to note that I, you know, it's great to see the Aegis Treatment Facility, since you spoke to that, Mr. City Manager. It's a beautiful facility, and I look forward to them being a part of the medical treatment community in Eureka, and them being open and able to help folks into recovery and management of opioid use disorder. And beyond that, I reached out to Jenna Katzes, and will be working with her and Swan Asbury, and Michelle, whose last name I can never remember from Humboldt Cider Company, Cartledge, Michelle Cartledge, she's also on our Economic Development Commission, on the Eureka Street Art Festival this year, which will be in Henderson Center, and really looking forward to working with those folks in the Henderson Center Merchants Association, who was very proactive, and they asked for the Street Art Festival to be in their neighborhood, and they're gonna be highly involved. And so, we'll be working on some promotional events before the actual Street Art Festival fundraising and promotion. And so, we're certainly seeking sponsors for the Street Art Festival this year, so folks in the community are hearing this and wanting to sponsor. There's a great need for sponsors every year, but I really hope to help make it a success, especially since it's gonna be in my ward this year. And I look forward to reporting more about some of the other events that we'll be having to fundraise and spread the word about the festival, and also just liven up the Henderson Center community even more. So, those are the main things for me. Also, just wanted to put in a plug for Humboldt Roller Derby season starting this Saturday, a great part of our community. We give back to the community in the form of donations at every game to a different nonprofit, and I'm gonna be playing in two games this weekend, so if anyone's free on Saturday night and wanting to support athletics in the community and a great nonprofit, and see me get bashed around, then come on out. It's at six PM at Redwood Acres. And lastly, I wanted to, on a more serious note, acknowledge the passing of a community member, Reina Kruger, one of the owners of the shanty and really kind of the life of the shanty. A lot of people just think of it as a dive bar, and I think they were proud, they've always been proudly a dive bar, but Reina, I think, really had a heart for the community and, in her own way, really gave back in, by having a lot of fundraisers there and really providing a place where people felt welcome, and, you know, even the most offbeat people in the community could feel welcome there. And I think it's a testament to how any business or any community member, no matter their role, can be a part of community building and a part of giving back to community causes that are dear to them. And so, Reina really did that, and I think the shanty really did that and wants to continue to do that, but her death was a really huge blow for a lot of folks that I know and love, and so I just wanted to acknowledge how important she was.
All right. Well, I just wanted to mention, City Manager, that we're glad that you're getting to meet lots of people, but we also want you to get some rest and take a little at a time to also enjoy parts of our community and explore and all of that as well. So, so we're glad you're here. I actually, Councilmember Bregel, read that, and we were, four of us were part of that, and, three years ago, and I'm really proud of the way that our community has worked to build bridges and create some of that, and particularly, I think about even our CSAT team and all the things that they have done to, to bridge and change perception around that community, the community, and how we work together. And very proud of what they've done, even placing seventy-four people in homes, I mean, into treatment, and some of the people in the community that have often been marginalized. So, really thankful for the work that has been done. Also, just seeing Aegis today was great. It was, it was good to see that and another piece coming into, into this whole area of working with all people across the board, and how can we continue to humanize everyone. And also, just wanted to mention that I'm leaving for Sacramento tomorrow regarding just community services and public safety advocacy in our state. So, will be gone for a little bit, but I'll report on that next time I'm, next meeting. Also, the Chamber Dinner is before our next meeting, January thirty-first, at Sequoia Conference Center, and that's happening, and they're a great, they do a lot of great work in our community and work together with businesses. So, if you are a business in the community and wanna be a part of that, it'd be great to join the Chamber. So, yeah, we're part of that. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Yes, thank you also, Councilmember Bregel, for reading that, the human rights statement from the City of Eureka. That really meant a lot to me when I was running for council, that that was something that you all had done, and so I'm just really proud that that's still something that we carry forward as a council. Let's see, in the last couple of weeks, like all of us, I also just appreciate all this, that I think we're a bunch of go-getters in our own different ways. So, but I did attend the Climate Action Plan Meeting that was shared between the city and the county, and what I really took away from that was people who were at that meeting were ready to move forward for steps to address climate change locally, both at the county level and at the city level, and it's really gonna be something that will take all of us making some changes in our lives together to move forward for that. It was great to meet the youth council. Earlier today, Public Works had their new, I think all of us got to see them, but the new vehicles here and kind of it was a show and tell kind of period, and it was great to see how those vehicles will really help support the whole community for more efficient addressing of maintenance issues. So, people, folks of the public, you know, look, look forward to seeing them out there. I toured Aegis and just appreciate that they really are reaching out to all of the council members and community, to build that community. Let's see, I did see Councilmember Bregel and Mayor Seaman at the Eureka NAACP, and I'm sure everyone would have been there, because they have been, Eureka NAACP Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration on Monday, and it was really great to see the pride among people of color, members of our community. And also, just a reminder that there's always work to do to move forward to create a more equitable and inclusive community where everyone feels safe. You know, it's just, it's just an ongoing process. Earlier today, I stopped in with Mayor Seaman at the Arts and Culture Commission to recognize all the artists of the month for last year, and the big takeaway from that for me was how much they feel valued and inspired in this community, and how keen they are to participate, and how much they talked about how special it is to be in Eureka, where they get to be part of making this community really beautiful. So, and thank you to all of them and to all of the many artists here in this community. Let's see, I also got to go under the really inspirational leadership of Centro del Pueblo to Marysville to protest the immigration, immigrant detention center that's there. And that particular event was put on by the Tsuru Solidarity Group. So, something I think really profound. So, that group is made up of people who were interned in Japanese camps during World War II, and so there are actual people who were, as children, interned in camps there who were talking about their experiences and how much that shaped, you know, the entirety of their lives. And it was just a very powerful reminder to see that history, you know, we, there's these lessons we've learned in history that we can carry forward. And one thing that was really amazing was that the people who put on that event really touted the work that's being done in Humboldt County as visionary and providing leadership for the entire state. And it was, you know, they talked about, like, the elected officials, you know, and so it was just a proud moment to be there and hear that. be there and hear that, that we are providing some models for humanitarian leadership that, that, you know, and again, there's still work to do, but, and thank you again to Centro del Pueblo for organizing that event. Let's see, oh, I have a letter. So as, as you know, we, sorry, I have like so many things at the end of the meeting. We started a Eureka Poet Laureate Program last year and, hold on. The poet laureate, David Hopper, who's planning to come and read a poem. He wrote a poem about the Tulawat Land Return. So he's going to come and bring that during the next council meeting. It'll be exciting. But he is kind of participating in a program, a grant that's being written at HSU to bring a poet here and write, an author. And what, what he would like is if the city would write a letter supporting the grant, that there's no financial obligation to the city. Basically, we would be just writing a letter of support of the grant and, and, and really looking at like, David Hopper as a poet laureate helping kind of bridge the, these like institutional opportunities with opportunities for the local community. And so this would just be a basic letter saying that we recognize this would be a cool possibility. This author in particular really does a lot around dialogue around race and equality. So I think it would, it would be a great, I mean, you know, if HSU is successful in, in this grant, it would be a great way of kind of having an artist help come and, and bring that dialogue to a greater degree in our community. I did kind of draft a quick letter there and checked in with David Hopper about that. Would the council be interested in moving forward with this letter of support for the, this grant?
So we're just looking for consensus for this?
Yeah.
Looks good.
I figured, but, you know, okay, thank you. And then, um, let's see, sorry, one more thing. So, let's see, I have been receiving some feedback from some members of some of the boards and commissions of just a lack of clarity around their role or roles. And, you know, and these are people who are volunteering for, for the city to come forward and offer their, their time. And, you know, and, and so I would like to see that we help clarify those roles. So it's, so it's just more understandable, like what they can do through the boards and commissions. So there's, you know, I think sometimes it just creates a tension when someone doesn't know sort of what, what they can be doing on a board or commission, what they should be doing. And, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to help provide just some, a little better structure for that. And I think it will make the people who are members of those boards and commissions feel more valued and also be able to contribute more to, in their roles. So that's just something I would like to bring forward. Okay, I think that's it.
Thank you very much. And actually, you did say something, so I do want to close out with one more note from me. I was there at the Arts and Culture Commission today handing out the artist of the month and I also went to the Economic Development Commission to hand out business of the month, which we did for the whole year, all at one time. And soon we will announce a business of the year and an artist of the year. So we have that to look forward to. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thanks.